Okay, it is three o'clock. I'll call the meeting to order and I'll look to my clerk for roll call, please.
Thank you, worship. Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the February tenth Committee of the Whole Meeting. I'm Jennifer Connor, Clerk of Ramara Township. I'll begin with roll call of council. Mayor Clark.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Bell.
Present.
Counselor Snutch.
Present.
Counselor Fisher.
Present.
Counselor Tu You.
Present.
Counselor Goff.
Present.
Counselor Bell.
Present.
Thank you.
This meeting is being streamed live on the Township of Ramara YouTube channel. Be advised that this meeting is being streamed live on the Township of Ramara YouTube channel.
This meeting is being streamed live on the Township of Ramara YouTube channel. Please be advised that by attending a public meeting of the Committee of the Whole of the Township of Ramara, you are consenting to your image, voice, and comments being recorded and will form part of the recording. The Chair, C A O, and/or Clerk have the discretion and authority to terminate or interrupt live streaming in exceptional circumstances where the content of debate is considered inappropriate to be published. Attendees are advised that they may be subject to legal action if their actions result in inappropriate behavior or comments.
Thank you. Do I have a disclosure being addressed by any member of council? If you happen to find yourself in that situation later, please declare it at that time before I turn it over to administration. Jane St. Marie is here. Do you want to introduce the newest member to our Ramara family? Come on right up to the mic.
So we're very pleased to introduce you to Elise Schofield. She's our new C E O of the library and she's been with us for one week, so it's been a bit of a trial by fire, especially with the all the snow. But she originally, or she's come to us from the Sioux St. Marie Public Library system. So she's used to snow, just not the cold biting weather.
Yes.
Anyway, so expect to see Elise a lot of our things and and we just wanted to introduce you and yeah.
Thanks, Jane. Yeah, it's nice to meet everyone. Feel free to stop in and say hi. I'll be attending these just to be able to get to know everyone and I welcome everyone to stop in as well. Thank you. Thanks.
Well, welcome aboard. And yes, we tried to bring some extra snow so you'd feel at home. So with that, I'll turn it over to administration and finance. Counselor Snutch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have four items on the agenda today. The first is three point one, which is a year-end report, the two thousand and twenty-four priorities. The recommendation is that we receive report A D O two, two thousand and twenty-five regarding the Township of Ramara's year-end two thousand and twenty-four priorities review as information. Can I have someone put that on the floor? Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Thank you, Counselor Fisher. Any questions from council?
Would you like me to review it?
Let's see.
Yes.
I'm looking for nods here. All right, go ahead.
All right. So this is a great presentation to show kind of our achievements that we've had this year and kind of where we are with some of the different initiatives that we have planned earlier in two thousand and twenty-four. So council adopted their strategic plan back in January of two thousand and twenty-four with the four different priorities. So that's service excellence, sustainable infrastructure, community connection, as well as strategic growth. From there, the following committee of the whole meeting, we presented that work plan as well as those two thousand and twenty-four initiatives. These are the two thousand and twenty-four initiatives or priorities that were adopted. And then on the following page, it shows kind of high level where we are. So complete stands for itself. Those are the the completed initiatives. Ongoing. So these are initiatives that would go throughout the full year. So when it comes to things like developing training opportunities for council and staff, that's something we want to do consecutively, as well as growing strategic partnerships, identifying different opportunities for business and tours and traction, so on and so forth. The green is good progress. So those are initiatives that we hope to complete in two thousand and twenty-four, but we quite, we didn't get quite to get that finished. So those will be finished in early two thousand and twenty-five. And then the ones in pink are the ones that move to two thousand and twenty-five. So in our mid-year, we provided some of the initiatives that were complete. So I won't talk about these today, but just an overview of which ones we completed so far. And I'll go into each of those four different kind of pillars. So one of them was excellence. And one of those initiatives was implementing innovative attraction and retention strategies. So one of them was creating a recruitment video. So we have a full-time one, as well as we'll be showcasing the seasonal and student video. Council adopted H R policy two point one seven, so that compressed work week policy, as well as the Township of Ramara offers enrollment for Omar's pension plan for volunteer firefighters. Developing training and development opportunities. So this is just a list of some of the things that staff and council has opportunity to participate, participate in. The organizational review. So this just provides just a very high level of the various initiatives that are previous C A O during Walter and our interim C A O done completed and that are now C A O Jackson will be going through and finishing up. Implementing a budget software system as well as Office three sixty-five. So I know our Director of Finance very much hope that the two thousand and twenty-five process was within it. However, however, she does expect that we'll go through the two thousand and twenty-six budget process with staff getting training in the spring of two thousand and twenty-five. And then, as some of us know, with Office three sixty-five, we got migrated with mail in the fall of two thousand and twenty-four with a full implementation in the early two thousand and twenty-five with training to be offered very soon. And growing services and access to online services. So one of the things this fall was the new water usage customer portal that was provided to water users so they could see kind of what the usage that they're using. Do note, though, that there was that delay with the alerts. Staff are still working trying to to fix that solution. So we hope to get that finalized very soon. And then some of the other things that we've developed online is the monthly P A P for utilities, the Freedom for Information Request Form. Now that is done. So that way people can pay that five dollars right away. So they don't have that delay. So then staff can start working on it, as well as building permit applications is payable now online. Now we get to sustainable infrastructure. So one of the items that we were working on in two thousand and twenty-four, however, will be completed in two thousand and twenty-five is the update of the engineer design guidelines, and that will be in collaboration with both the building, planning, and infrastructure department. Developing the water sewer servicing plan so that Ramirez, the South Ramirez servicing plan will come to council in two thousand and twenty-five. And then through the two thousand and twenty-five budget process, the athlete servicing study was identified. So that will also be completed in two thousand and twenty-five. Initiating that water and wastewater services expansion. I know that this was a topic that we discussed quite a bit in two thousand and twenty-four, but the final, the finalization of those documents for at least for tender with our engineers will be provided to council in two thousand and twenty-five. Completing the water and wastewater rate review. So this was provided to council in early two thousand and twenty-four, again during the budget deliberations at October twenty-eighth, with council passing that water and wastewater rate study for two thousand and twenty-five to two thousand and twenty-three at the end of November. Then we get to our third pillar or priority. So that community connection. So looking at various communication tools. So as we always look at different ways to look at community engagement, we revamped the Ramara bulletin. So it's more of a newsletter format, providing more information to residents and important dates, news, and updates. Revamping the tax and utility insert as well. So we're making sure that we're providing the right information for those users on kind of the information they would want to know about. The water usage customer portal. There's a way that we can send out even information to residents through that, as well as investigating engagement activities. So council, as one of their requests, was providing a report in the new year. So that will come in the new year as well. What can we also do for engagement? The next one was the special event strategy and policy. So that was moved to this year. It was provided to you as a report in early January or January sixth Committee of the Whole. And then, again, I believe at this council or this Committee of the Whole meeting, the Parks and Rec Master Plan. We've had the stakeholder and community engagement this past summer. They came to council. We've then followed up with another open house on February fifth, where that final document to them was be presented to council very soon. Can you continue to monitor community needs? So this is looking at our emergency management and some of the different events and information our Fire and Rescue Services presents. So they completed that community risk assessment assessment, that C R A for the municipality, as well as they're always continue to do that public education of fire prevention. So whether that's through social media, attending events, as well as attending different schools or different talks throughout the township. And our last one, that's strategic growth. So complete the official plan. So the the draft final document is available as well as the schedules online and has been sent to the County of Simcoe and other required authorities to provide comments and review. And then the following staff reports, as well as recommendations, will be provided at the upcoming Committee of the Whole meeting anticipated for April of two thousand and twenty-five. The C I P was moved to this year, as well as working with partners to identify opportunities. So looking at our different stakeholders, like the experience of County, the County of Simcoe Dev Department, our little R E C Dev group and other agencies to different events and programs and so on and so forth. So through that, we're able to complete the winter videography and photography projects. So that was a two thousand and twenty-three project last year. Every time I booked it, we had green this year. We were very, very, it was very cold and very snowy, but it looked definitely like winter out there. So that's been great. And another thing that we've been looking into is filming opportunities. So I know over the last few years, we've had different requests. So we're looking at developing a policy. So that way, when someone does request it from start to finish, we're making sure that we get all the right departments and those approvals in place. So that will be provided to council in two thousand and twenty-five. And that's it. And then the rest would be department stats. Do you want me to keep reviewing those? Are you good?
So we're turning it over to questions from council. We'll start on the right with Dana. Do you have any questions there?
I had a question more for the part three point two.
Okay, Jen, any questions? Keith? Mayor? Jerry? Nope. Okay, so that we receive report A D O two twenty-five regarding the Township Ramara's year-end two thousand and twenty-four priority review as information. All in favor? That's passed. Item three point two, the two thousand and twenty-five strategic priorities. Recommendation is that we receive report A D O three twenty-five as information that we approve the two thousand and twenty-five priorities as presented. So at this case, we'll get up. Oh, yeah, good idea. Put on the floor by Counselor Goff and second by Counselor Tu You. All right. Do you want to, Ashley, do you want to give us a recap on this one here?
Sure. So basically, the two thousand and twenty-five priorities just looks at the work plan itself and just brings out some of the things that we didn't get done in two thousand and twenty-four onto the two thousand and twenty-five, as well as the other things that we had outlined in that overall larger work plan that we would get done in two thousand and twenty-five. So all of these different initiatives were budgeted for. So none of these are outside of what was already planned.
Okay. Any questions from council? Counselor Tu You.
Thank you, Counselor Snutch. I guess in two thousand and twenty-four, one of the priorities was to complete the Lake St. John flood mapping project for Ramara Township. And that was in item three point one and in the slides that Ashley just presented. I had an opportunity to informally discuss this with our planner, Jennifer Stong. And it seems that the other half of the flood floodplain mapping in that region is old M N R F mapping from decades ago that does not necessarily reflect the landscape that had changed a lot since that time in terms of changing elevations for new builds within that area. And this is not listed within the two thousand and twenty-five priorities. I would love to hear staff's opinion regarding any possible opportunity to add this northern section so that the mapping could be considered complete, i.e. the Lake St. John mapping, as I understand it, only includes one half of a shoreline residential street. What would you anticipate the cost would be for that? And this is a question directed to the planning department, so that this floodplain mapping could be part of the one policy within the township's jurisdiction? And if the cost is manageable, is this something we could think about adding to the two thousand and twenty-five strategic priorities? Or would it be best left for next year? Thank you.
I'll take that one through the chair to Counselor Tu You. We'll look at it at the time. It was fairly expensive. Just preliminary estimates were between a hundred and a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We did look at the Lake St. John's area because we didn't have any flood mapping whatsoever, and it was flood prone. And there's a lot of developable area in in that watershed. So we needed that information for the official plan. We could certainly do it, but so far, just from local knowledge and emergency response, we haven't seen that the flood elevations that are showing in the nineteen eighty-six mapping are far off from what we're seeing in flood elevations in the area. There's also two man-made control units and that limit the outflow of the rivers that can be modified. So it does vary the the actual flood elevation levels as well. So we felt that the numbers we had were adequate for for our planning purposes at this time.
Thank you. Yes. And we have noticed that since Parks Canada took over the dam, it has been much better managed and controlled for sure. But I think just for the purposes of the old mapping reflecting, basically that everyone north of that is underwater when they're technically not. I just think for the purposes of people looking for building permits or even insurance and things like that, it makes it very difficult. And and I know that that typically has not been a problem for the north end of the street versus the south. So it's just seems kind of backwards. So that's why I was hoping for that. Anyway, thank you for your opinion and the cost. Thank you.
Any other questions from council? Counselor Bell.
Thank you. On the sustainable infrastructure, we don't have any strategic direction that talks about actual sustainable. So the water and sewer increases at eight and thirteen percent are not really sustainable. And without including any kind of strategy in the strategic plan, it feels like we're we're not going to be prioritizing, looking for solutions. So one of the things that I had asked about was the presentation that was brought from county about the potential for the the region to be taking over water and sewer. So I'm hoping that we can update the sustainable infrastructure category so that it actually does encompass finding ways to make the infrastructure sustainable. So there are other opportunities. There's municipal service corporizations, corporations, sorry. There's private-public partnerships. There's other other things that we can do to find solutions to sustainable infrastructure. And this, this is, there's nothing here included to talk about that. We're talking about South Ramara. And actually, I'm not sure if we're talking about just the expansion of services or if we're actually talking about the South Ramara facility and the engineering report that was commissioned back in two thousand and twenty-one. So I think this category, it's just, it needs a little more information added to it. And I I would like to not carry this today. I would, I would like to just defer so that all of council has a chance to look at these and think a little bit more about what what needs to be inside each of these categories, because I feel like we're missing some items still. And I don't necessarily think it's just in sustainable infrastructure. On strategic growth, collaborate with partners, yes. And I did hear that we're talking about collaborating with county and some other partners, but we actually have partners locally within Ramara Township that we could be collaborating with. So I'm, I'm just going to recommend that for today, we just receive maybe and not accept it the way that it is and that we defer acceptance so that we have time to engage with our publics a little bit, as well as come back with our own thoughts and recommendations.
And Deputy Mayor.
You just, I'm just want a clarification. Are you looking for a deferral or a referral? You're looking for more information from staff to add to?
I, I think maybe not necessarily, maybe information from staff, but that might come in in two weeks if or 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 four weeks. But I just feel like we need to collect more information ourselves about some of these things, because I just feel like there's there's missing pieces in each of the categories. So some of it might be coming from council recommendation. But when I say that, that wouldn't be me necessarily. That's community speaking to me and then me bringing what their concerns are back to just bolster this up a little bit so that when the work priorities are completed, we we have a complete picture of all the different strategies, a little bit more than what we're seeing here today.
Okay, any other questions? Well, I believe this is a living document and it constantly changes. So I'm prepared to go ahead with it. So we'll take a vote here. And the vote is that we receive report A D O three twenty-five as information and that we approve the two thousand and twenty-five priorities as presented. All in favor? Fails. All right. So we didn't receive it at all.
Yeah, I'd look at the clerk, what direction you'll need, Mr. Chairman.
So this was defeated, this motion, it was not passed. So it was either received, we can receive it as information or that we can defer it to another meeting. Do I just need to move her in a second or please?
I would move to refer it back to staff for more information, to add information regarding the things that Counselor Bell said. I do think they're valid. I think that we do need a little more information on that. So I would ask for a referral back to staff for that. I don't know if somebody seconded.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, well, there were some here today. And then if counselor could email in what suggestions you have to staff so that they have them, because this document was prepared, and I think there was public input on the strategic plan, was there not, Ashley?
Yeah. So this is all from our work plan that we provided to camp council February twenty-six meeting. So this is just pulling from that.
Right. So if we're looking for in any information, then we need to get those emails into staff so that the report can come back in a timely manner. Thank you.
Did you have a suggestion on how many days? What's a reasonable amount of time a week?
Through you, your worship, certainly, if members of council, if there are specific items, depending on the nature of those items, whether any further research would be required. So I would ask that members of council provide those emails to me directly by end of week. And then based on the submissions, your worship, we will determine from there as to what further work is required as to whether we can make it to the next council meeting or not. But I will certainly let council know via a memo, the timeframe for it to be returned back to council for approval.
Okay, so put on the floor by Deputy Mayor, second by Counselor Goff. All in favor? Sorry, what was the word you used?
Referral.
All in favor? Passed. Item three point three is the Enbridge Gas Franchise Agreement renewal, recommendation that receive report I D O six twenty-five, and that we pass the following resolution. One, that this council approves the form of draft bylaw and franchise agreement and authorize the submission thereof to the Ontario Energy Board for approval pursuant to the provisions of section nine of the Municipal Franchisees Act. And two, this council requests that the Ontario Energy Board make an order declaring and directing that the ascent of the municipal electors to the attached draft to the attached draft bylaw and franchise agreement pertaining to the corporation of the Township of Ramara is not necessarily pursuant to the provisions of section nine four of the Municipal Franchise Act. Can I have someone put that on the floor for me? Counselor Fisher, second by Counselor Tu You. Questions from council? Sorry, go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
Clarification from the clerk on this one. I believe this will be the last time. This is something we have to do ongoing.
That is correct, your worship. And they're moving. And one of the reasons why we're doing this is because of the amalgamation of merger of companies. And so we're required to commence the process using the twenty years franchise agreement with the approved model.
Okay, I noticed in that it mentions that six, I think it said six hundred homes were serviced by natural gas already. Do we have a map or something showing the natural gas isn't in our mapping system? Where these six hundred homes are, if I read it correctly?
Through your worship to Counselor Snutch, I don't have that information, but we can get it for you.
I didn't see that. Yeah, that'd be great. Thank you. So all in favor of, let me see what we have to do here of passing this resolution. All in favor? Passed. Okay, next is item three point four. Municipal Insurance Pool Implementation with Simcoe County Municipalities. The recommendation is that report T R O one twenty-five be received and that Township of Ramara becomes a founding subscriber of the Simcoe Municipal Insurance Pool. And that the Director of Financial Services Treasurer or appropriate dividend assigned by the Chief Administration Officer be authorized to represent the Township of Ramara on the Municipal Insurance Advisory Board. And that the mayor and clerk be authorized to sign the form of subscription in the municipalities in the County of Simcoe subscribers, agreements substantially in the form of attached. Can I have someone put that on the floor for me? Deputy Mayor, second by Counselor Goff. Questions from council? All in favor? Passed. Back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I'll turn it over to Planning and Development Services, Counselor Fisher.
Thank you, your worship. There's one item on the agenda. It is recommendation report, the zoning bylaw amendment file Z six slash twenty-four, four one nine five McCray Park Road, Healy. Recommendation that the report titled Recommendation Report Zoning Bylaw Amendment File Z six slash twenty-four, forty-one ninety-five McCray Park Road, Healy, be received and that the zoning bylaw amendment application Z dash sixty-four slash twenty-four be approved at the draft zoning bylaw, no, and the draft zoning bylaw attached as appendix A to be finalized and brought forward to a future council meeting to be enacted. Can I, somebody put that on the floor, please? Counselor Bell and Counselor Goff. Discussions, conversations, questions? Okay, so all in favor? That is carried. Back to you, your worship.
Protective Services, Counselor Bell, please.
Supper water. This is a long one. Okay, so there's quite a few. So the first one is five point one, the two thousand and twenty-five resident parking permit program. The recommendation is that we receive report C D O eight twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-five resident permit parking program is information. And that the two thousand and twenty-five resident permit parking program be implemented on the following streets and municipal parking lots requiring the display of a valid parking permit. One, on all municipal roadways with the bound, within the boundaries of the settlement area known as Lagoon City. Two, in the municipal parking lot known as Lagoon City Public Beach and Park and Mailbox Parking Lot. Three, in the municipal parking lot known as Bluebird Boat Launch and Park. Four, in the municipal parking lot known as The Steps. Five, Cortlandt Street from Balsam Road to Lake Simcoe. Six, Whitney Road from Cortlandt Street to Buyer's Lane. Seven, Anderson Avenue from Cortlandt Street to The Dead End. Eight, Lake Shore Drive from Simcoe Road to Concession Road A. Nine, Glen Rest Drive. Ten, John Street. Eleven, Peter Street. Twelve, Bonnie Beach Road. Thirteen, Edge Hill Road. Fourteen, Tuppy Drive. Fifteen, Harry's Lane. Sixteen, Leo Crescent. Seventeen, Side Road twenty-five. And that the paid parking program honk continue in the following areas at five dollars per hour. One, Lagoon City Public Beach and Parking Lot. Two, Lake Avenue, Lagoon City, on-street parking from Simcoe Road to Ridge Avenue. Three, Cortlandt Street, Atherton, on-street parking from Merritt Provincial Park entrance to Whitney Road. Four, Bluebird Municipal Boat Launch Park Parking Lots. And five, Laguna Parkway, Shellhead Parking. And now I will stop talking. And I know there's some, we had some outstanding things. So I'll go to you, John, first, if if you want to. Oh, I don't know. Put it on the floor first. Yes, Deputy Mayor, Deputy Mayor and Jen, Counselor Fisher.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The the easy point is that this is basically re-implementing the two thousand and twenty-four permit parking and paid parking zones with the addition of number nine through seventeen, which were the new ones we just recently added for Glen Rest, John, Peter, Bonnie Beach, Edge Hill, Tuppy, Harry's Lane, Leo Crescent, and Side Road twenty-five. So there's no substantial changes to that program for two thousand and twenty-five. The outstanding piece was the obtaining of the legal opinion to determine if we can restrict parking in our municipal public parking lots to residents only. And the legal opinion received was that we cannot completely restrict. We must offer a paid option or some sort of permit option to non-residents to park in those lots. So it's the recommendation that we do not restrict uh going forward.
Go ahead, councillor Fisher.
Uh, thank you councillor Bell. Just one question. Um, number seventeen on the list was Side Road twenty five. Um, I'm guessing, as you should never assume, that you're talking about the south or what, like the one closest to the water, not necessarily the one that's Monk Road north up towards the casino side road twenty five? Is that correct?
Through the chair, that's correct.
Okay, well, and there'll be um language in there to let people be aware of that?
I'll ensure that what we post on the the website and obviously signage will be posted on side road twenty five in the appropriate spot.
Yeah, excellent. Thank you.
Anybody else have questions? Okay, I I actually do, um, John. So uh the legal opinion, it applies to the parking lots and not the roadways because under the Highway Traffic Act, we can determine, I understand that where we want to have cars and not have cars. So um I I have to ask these questions. So I see that um the honk app brought in ten thousand uh odd dollars from Lagoon City and I wh- what is the cost of a bylaw officer to be in Lagoon City over that summer season? Does it exceed ten thousand eight hundred sixty five dollars? You may not know that off the top of your head.
I I unfortunately don't. Um, certainly. You know, we know the hourly wages that our officers make, but I'd have to do a calculation on how many hours they would be sent or assigned down to those locations.
And I and I just, I wanna, the reason I'm asking these questions is because if if we can't restrict parking in the municipal parking lot, um, we know that the trespass issues and all of the other issues that people were communicating to us in Lagoon City. And we learned those when we did the survey with the parking lot. So um uh one of the things that I would be thinking we might be able to do in the summer is have the resident parking, permit parking throughout Lagoon City and remove the honk parking along lake. Um, because all the honk parking is doing is bringing in some of those issues that we heard being raised. And so if we had the honk parking left just in the lot and only in front of honk parking signs, we could limit or at least, yeah, limit the the whatever else was going on that was causing concerns. And I know councillor Goff was concerned about revenue. Um, and I I understand what you're saying, but um you know, in total, we're only bringing in twenty thousand dollars in revenue, which is not uh is not substantial when you stack that up against are the people who live in the communities able to enjoy their communities. So that concerns me. And then, I mean, if we're bringing in if we're sp- half of what we're bringing in is um I mean, that revenue is coming from, but if if it's costing you that much to put the bylaw officers on the street, there's no net gain anyway. So the revenue to me is kind of irrelevant, right? It's more about are the people happy inside their community? So I I think that what I know the community would be looking for is limiting the amount of parking that's available. And I don't think that they're in favor of having honk parking in both the municipal lot and then out on the streets over the summer months. And go ahead.
I just have a question since we're talking about revenue. And you might not know this off the top of your head, Mr. Popple, but what ticket revenue for parking infractions do we normally take in?
Uh, so in twenty twenty four, we issued approximately three hu- we're three hundred and eleven tickets on approximately um at about fifty dollars a ticket. Um, the majority of those would be for park without resident permit or fail to pay for parking. Um, so um, I'd have to do some quick math, but yeah. Roughly. So obviously, there's other offenses uh that are ticketed in other parts of the township as well. But yeah, it would be roughly that amount of money. Um, and just to councillor Bell's point on Lake Avenue, there was about, there was only about eight hundred dollars in revenue on that on-street portion for honk. And I would say the majority of that revenue was related to winter parking for people going out on the ice, not spring, summer, fall parking. So removing that would not I doubt we would see a huge decline in the revenues in that area.
Thank you. Does anybody else have comments? Okay, I'm surprised. I just thought everybody else would have. Um, so I I mean, I I can't put a motion on the floor because I'm I'm the chair, but um that would be, uh, but I would want to remove the, I would want to remove Lake Avenue from the summer parking. But I can't do that. Unless I pass the chair back to the mayor.
I can, yes. Uh, my computer crashed, but I've got a print and printed one here. So yes, you have an amendment you'd like to put on the floor?
I just would like to remove Lake, uh, the the honk, uh, the honk parking from Lake Avenue. Um, yeah, that that would be the only amendment.
In summertime only?
Yeah, because our winter, our winter parking has got a whole different structure now, anyway.
Is that a big deal? Like, do we change in signage? What are we doing if we're going from honk to permit?
Uh, through, well, I guess you are the chair now, Mr. Mayor. Um, no, it's simply I deactivated on our backend system. So if somebody tried to scan the sign, it would say uh parking is currently permitted with a pre- a residence pass only. And then they would know that they, if they don't have a residence pass, they they can't park there. So it's seamless.
All right. Do I have a secondary? You're gonna second that?
With the amendment, the mover and seconder with the original motion that's on.
Yeah.
If we're okay with the amendment, then we don't need a
That would work too.
Find your worship.
Is the, uh, who is the original mover and seconder? Are are you guys fine with that amendment?
I'm fine with that amendment.
Sorry, I was just wondering if that part, do you remember councillor Snatch, we were talking a few months back about uh having a signage by the trailhead in Lagoon City? Is that the area that's uh proposed? Because I, no?
This is, this is right down at the water. Yeah.
Oh, there, okay.
Okay, so on the amended motion, and I'll I'll carry on for chair and just because you have, all in favor? Opposed of any? I'm seeing none. So that is carried. I'll turn it back to you councillor.
Thank you. Uh, so next we have five point two, the outdoor special event bylaw. And the recommendation is that we receive report C D O three twenty five as information and that we forward the outdoor special event bylaw to council for adoption. Can someone put that on the floor, please? Councillor Goff, councillor Fisher, thank you. Uh. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you very much councillor Bell. Um, through the chair, I I guess I, my biggest concern is for nonprofits. Uh, my big, uh, there's a lot of nonprofits that will have events that are close to that five hundred and they just can't afford that thousand dollars. Can we make um make it so that if they have a charitable number, it's a nonprofit organization within our township that we waive that?
If if that's written into the bylaw, and I don't see why it can't be, then yeah, we could provide a an exemption from from the fee. Um, I would want to keep it potentially for those smaller events that are in that
Sure.
five to a thousand dollar, because if we're getting a nonprofit all of a sudden is running a ten thousand person event, then we we want to, we're going to invest a lot of staff time into those reviews, regardless of it being a not-for-profit or for-profit organization. So um developing some language around that.
I I would make that amendment then, that I would uh, I would say that events that are held under fifteen hundred people by nonprofit organizations within our township that are registered within our township, that we waive that fee.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I'm I'm just actually going to just jump in for a second. Um, and then I'll, I will come back. I I, when we were down at Roma, I was um, I was in a concurrent session, an agritourism session, actually, and it just happened to come up that town of Pelham just uh throughout the year twenty twenty four did an a massive amount of research and uh they have a brand new special event bylaw and it covers um uh special organizer, service organizations and and some other fairly new and updated kinds of things. Um, it actually does not include uh the ability to do a refusal, which it ma- that makes sense to me because the special event bylaws about permissions, like what are the kinds of things we can permit and how do we permit them more than it's about refusal? Um, so one of the things I would like to do is forward that bylaw to have it looked at and considered for language. Um, so anyway, go ahead councillor Goff.
Thank you. Uh, much to what the deputy mayor was saying. Can we have on special occasions that they come, it comes to council and council makes the decision on a case-by-case basis, right? Because I know uh the bike motorcycle, what are they called, Mr. Mayor? The centurions, right? The charity ride, that would be something that, because the money's going to sick kids where I think not having to pay that thousand dollars because they don't know how many bikers are going to be there would be a good thing for us to support and waive the fees. So if we could have a maybe that where it's an option where they can come to council. And we even have, we got our uh invitations to yesteryears. And hopefully they have ten thousand people come to it or or more. Right? And we don't want yesteryears being having to uh pay a a fee.
So would we need the exception or can we, it just be written that it, at any time, council can waive a bylaw, can we not? Or can we just have it that if it is a charitable event with upon council approval, it could be waived? I'd rather do that than a blanket myself as well.
That through the chair, I can certainly include some creative language that would allow those those types of requests to come to council for for consideration and all ultimately approval of wa- waiving any fees at that point.
I'm fine with that being my uh my member.
Uh, the other one I had now, I take it our zoning bylaw would kick into some of this too. Like this would be rural areas, it wouldn't be shoreline residential. That would be covered under our zoning bylaw, or does that need to be covered under this bylaw? So I get, I think it's a wall-e question for the zoning bylaw.
Uh, yes, there's uh, there's additional uh uses that are allowed in in rural and ag properties. But we'd have to look closer at like things like shoreline residential and things like that. But some of the larger properties would would automatically be allowed to do it.
No, and I'm thinking right now it would be prohibited in a shoreline residential or residential area, would it not? A large-scale festival like this wouldn't, because active recreation is one of the clauses in rural. So then this would be act of recreation where I believe it's not in shoreline residential or residential zones.
I I'd have to look at the definition exactly of active recreation, but uh off the top of my head, I I don't think it would be possible in the in the shoreline residentials.
Right, right.
Thank you. So I guess I might have to pass it back to you. I know you want to put an amendment on the floor, but so do I. So we'll probably have to pass it to the mayor and then do it that way. But um, I, the comment I want to make is that we we don't have the OP back yet. And then therefore we have not updated our zoning bylaws. And I know that the province will always supersede, but um I think that trying to kind of you know, do a reactionary bylaw, because I know we have an event coming. I feel like we we haven't had one for thirty years. So for the purposes of this particular event this year, I think that we could probably just um, or I wonder if there's any way that we could just work with that vendor and say, these are our requirements for this special event on this day, date and time. And in the meantime, let the OP come back, let the zoning bylaws start to come forward. Um, and also give give bylaw an opportunity to go look at this new bylaw by Pelham, which is like literally passed in November of twenty four. So it's as up-to-date a blueprint for things like diversified um ag use and things like that. So I I just feel like if we if we held off a little bit and just deal with this one special event as a one-off and then have the opportunity to have the special events bylaw come back and be architected in uh the whichever special event was being referred to at the last meeting that was causing us to want to to move it forward. Is I just, and then I know that um in addition, Clarrington was the the township that they talked about from the enforcement perspective. So there's two kind of blueprints out there for a different township that's already done the heavy lifting that we wouldn't have to do and um to help us bring some of this language. So just as an example, they define service club. Um, they use service club and they define it as means of volunteer-based non-commercial organization, whether incorporated or not, that is dedicated to the growth and general wel- welfare of its members in the community. So it would help to cover all of our service organizations and nonprofits. And then they have exceptions built into the bylaw. Um, and it it just, I think it might help to clarify some of these muddier issues. So I I think I will pass it back to you, Mayor, because I will want to defer so that we can consider this. And I know deputy mayor has a different amendment, so.
All right, I'll I'll chair. Then I will ask a question on that. We have no bylaw in the books right now. So if this festival were to go ahead, what's protecting us? And can we prohibit the festival?
That's correct, your worship. So we currently have no bylaw to regulate this.
Right.
I would have to look, um, because we don't have a formal proposal before us for any event. We would have to take a look at the property being proposed and work with the planning department. In all likelihood, what they're proposing isn't permitted under the zoning bylaw. So we would just be saying no. Unless there is some planning procedure that would allow them to uh get a temporary type of use on that property, depending on what it is and where it is. So if it does go forward, um, many of the requirements that are contained in this bylaw, emergency plans, fire plans, uh, traffic plans, we have no authorities to request those um from from the uh the operator.
Well, that's my concern. Like, I don't know about this festival. I've never heard of it, but I just keep hearing it's the rumor mill thing. So it would go ahead with none of these if we didn't have some kind of bylaw in place. That that's why I think I would prefer we pass it, but if we want to amend it at a later date, so be it. But if at least we have something on the books to protect ourselves. That's kind of the way I'm looking at it.
That's the correct word. In in talking with with potential organizers of these things, they're willing to do these things already, but I I don't know if that's true. I have no way of guaranteeing that we will get satisfaction, whether the fire chief will be satisfied that the the event is safe and and those types of things. And how we respond to those events and the involvement of the police and and all those security aspects and how it'll impact the community. So um, it could go forward, it may not. I I don't know.
All right. So I'll leave that to you councillor Bell. Do you still want to defer? Um.
Well, I just think we don't, I just don't think we're there yet with the bylaw. When I look at this bylaw that Pelham just architected, there's, there's just more in it. It's just more inclusive and it has more definitions, more um like, because the idea here is to allow these events, right? Not restrict them. So this, the way they have this bylaw structured, it just is just has more meat to it that that would actually help us build a better bylaw that I that I think we might not have to amend as soon as we finish the zoning bylaws. So I I would want to, um, but I also know that, I know you're feeling the timeline, but um e- even if it even if it ca- even if we broke into committee the whole at the next council meeting to talk about any changes that Deborah got back, I would think that would even give us enough time. It's a, it's a couple of weeks away.
That's, that's doable as well. Uh, councillor Fisher.
How much? Like, I know bylaws have the word law in it. So I mean, obviously more of a mechanism there. Is there a way to create policy in the meantime that would help govern? Or is policy just basically an internal thing that we can't actually enforce on the outside, saying this is what our special events policy is within the municipality until we can get the language um that council's seeking in the bylaw that we want to see?
Through the chair, I can't enforce policies. So we can have all the policies that we want, but at the end of the day, if if they don't do it and we want to proceed with enforcement and legal tech action, I would have no, no teeth.
Any other mo- uh councillor to you?
Thank you. Uh, through the chair to John. I've just got, I guess, I I understand what we're, that we're trying to sort of deal with a a bigger issue here, but of course, I'm hearing from all of the smaller issue residents saying, oh, my gosh, what about this? And I hope it's okay if I just read out some of the concerns that we can maybe put forward into this uh item that we're going to hopefully defer or refer. Okay, so will the one thousand dollars be treated as a deposit, i.e. if there are no incidents, would they get their money back?
No.
No.
That's the cost, man.
Got it. Okay, it's, like I said, I'm just passing these along from residents. It says public or private property. So does that mean that this would apply to someone having a wedding on their own property?
No, weddings would be exempt from the bylaw.
Okay. Uh, would this apply to an event taking place on church property where permission has already been granted from the church?
Again, we, if, depending right now as is, if the event met the the attendee numbers, then they would be required to get a permit. I believe there's some amendments proposed that would allow for those types of groups to be exempt from the 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 fees.
Okay, um, does it mean that this event holder would not have to seek external liability insurance? Is this encompassed as part of the fee?
No, one of the requirements is to provide um insurance identifying the township at the five million dollar level and ten million dollar level if there's alcohol.
Okay, and uh would this apply to Ramona Hall and its events? And I'm asking that just because it talks about normal events and they have these uh events like the Fall Fair, it's set every year. So would that be considered a normal event or is that?
I think typically those events are have been granted approval, they're on municipal property. So we would, that's really not what this is targeting. It's targeting large-scale or larger uh private events that are being hosted in the township.
I see. Thank you. Um. For the ACCB, would they be exempt for events that they would put on at the Atherton Community Park?
That would be a municipal event, then, would it not, if we're putting, if it's our community center board putting on an event at our park?
It it would be through, uh, your worship and obviously the the board would be communicating those plans through their It, it would be through, your worship, and obviously the, the board would be communicating those plans through their, their meeting minutes. And adopted by council, so that there shouldn't be an issue there.
Okay. Um, and how would the number of visitors be calculated if it is a come and go event with no specific entrance?
Uh, through the chair. So that would be, the applicants would have to provide their proposed or anticipated attendance numbers. And then it becomes an enforcement issue. If, if all of a sudden we have a thousand person event that turns into a ten thousand person event. Then we'll be going back on the uh, on the organizers under the bylaw.
Okay, thank you.
Deputy Mayor.
I think, I just want a clarification because you talked about the Fall Fair being municipal, but it's actually not. It's actually on uh, Ramona Hall as well as Winter Fest.
Right. So the, I think the language would be important that we, we provide exemptions for those community groups that are organizing those types of events. And I, I don't think those are the ones we're concerned about. Um, it's these large scale events.
Yeah. Outdoor rock concerts are, well, like Burrows Creek type concerts is what we're trying to protect ourselves from here. Okay. So I, I would, I have the motion on, I think we had the motion on the floor originally. Do you have an amendment, Councilor Bell?
Yeah, I just, I, I just want to do the referral and just for full disclosure, I did just send everybody the link to that Pelham bylaw. So that everybody can have a look at it and see what the language says. So I just, just want to say that because I just forwarded it off real quick. Not that I expect you to read it right now, but I've sent it just so that you can see that language because it does encompass all this. Um, service organizations and define them well and that sort of thing. So yes, my, my motion would be just that we defer. And then if we need to break into committee of the whole at council to rediscuss that, I would be open to that. But if we just, we don't make the decision today and accept it the way it is, we just allow um, time for a bit of a review on that language. And then can still consider it at council.
You got a bunch of information we gave you today to do some amendments. So what do you think of next committee of the whole?
Yeah, I don't have a concern with that, Your Worship.
Do I have a second or to just refer to the next committee of the whole and with? What's that? A month away, yes.
I think Councilor Bell though said that we could break it into committee of the whole during our council meeting.
Like, could you have that in two weeks for council or no? Like the, the comments that were made here at the table, any, any changes? But if council has any specific changes that they want to see.
I, I just, I was more worried just because I thought you had a timeline. But if we can do it next committee of the whole, that, my amendment can say that.
Yeah, I would prefer the next committee of the whole because I, I would want to make sure that I, I haven't missed anything and that I have time to review it. Because I think the deadline would be this coming Friday um, for that next council meeting.
Oh, okay. Yeah, yeah, no problem. So on, on the referral, all in favor? Uh, opposed? That is carried. Okay. I will turn it back to you, Madam Chair.
Feel like we're ping pong.
I think you're on five.
Five point three, right? So animal control um, town services agreement with Rama First Nation. Um, so the recommendation is that we receive animal control services agreement, Rama First Nation, twenty twenty five to twenty twenty seven. Report CDO six twenty five is information and that the township enter into agreement with Rama First Nation. To provide animal control pound services for a three-year period from twenty twenty five to twenty twenty seven. Somebody put that on the floor, please. Councilor Goff and Councilor to you. Um, do you wish to speak to it, John?
I can give just a, a brief. There's only a couple of minor changes to it. I'll just share that this agreement was shared with our friends at Rama First Nation. So they did receive a copy of it prior to it being added to the meeting agenda. And uh, there's some minor increases. So in twenty twenty four, we charged about thirty five hundred dollars for the service. Um, and assistance from the Director of Finance, we looked at uh, the number of hours that were performed uh, caring for. Uh, animals coming from Rama First Nation. Um, and we weren't breaking you even on those uh, those hours of service. So that's why the recommendation is to increase the base fee to five thousand dollars for the first year. And that would include the first eighty-five hours of uh, services provided to those animals. And then after the eighty-five hours, we would bill on a cost recovery model uh, for those additional, additional hours. And then the other change was that currently um, any animals that weren't claimed. After the five day for dogs or three days for cats hold period. The township was responsible for covering the costs of care until they were adopted. So we're asking that Rama First Nation um, make a decision on uh, the continued care of those animals. And pay for those costs until they are adopted, if that's what they choose to do. So those are the two changes. Staff at Rama uh, were accepting of that information and it has already been forwarded to Rama Council for adoption.
Thank you. Just go ahead, Kathy.
Um, just a verification. So the, the cost was thirty five hundred and thirteen ninety. What were we charging them?
So we charged them thirty five hundred dollars and change in twenty twenty, twenty twenty-four. That was the whole fee.
Okay, so the five thousand is to bring us up to that. Now the two percent per year, is that, is that going to keep it up to where we need to be? Including labor that, you know, all of our agreements as far as our um, increases in wages per year.
I'm gonna pass it over to Ms. Higgins for assistance.
Um, so we included a uh, an increase of two percent per year. Um, it's hard to know what the salary will be next year, um, but at least we have something in there to hopefully uh, get more. Um, to break even. That's the goal.
Any other comments or questions? All in favor? That's carried. Uh, so next we have five point four by law enforcement year end report. And the recommendation is that we receive report CDO seven twenty five year end report is information. Somebody put that on the floor, please. Deputy Mayor and Councilor Fisher, um, would you like to give us a little overview? I think it's a.
Thank you. It's fairly self-explanatory. Uh, busy year again for by law enforcement. Um, between the number of calls for service that were received um, and uh. A significant amount of administrative monetary penalties were issued for both short-term rental um, violations. And for uh, actually substantial for the long grass bylaw as well. Um, that system. Uh, with our current contractor worked a lot better in twenty twenty four. Uh, the, the number of uh, calls from residents. Still asking when the grass would be cut were reduced to maybe a two or three as opposed to a lot more in previous years. Um, but uh, again, it was a busy year uh, for the bylaw department. Um, over five hundred and fifty calls for service. Um, for the department. So we continue to receive a lot of complaints and, but they're, they're handled quickly by our officers. Um, happy to answer any specific questions.
Thank you. Does, go ahead, Councilor Goff.
Thank you, Councilor Bell. Uh, John, since you brought up the long grass bylaw, and I know in the past. The turnaround between actually our residents getting a notice that they needed to cut the grass to the time it actually happened. What timeframe are we speaking now as to? When it grass gets cut?
Thank you, through the chair. So we're about ten days from our original complaint to when the grass is being cut. So it's, we're getting the notices out quickly, especially if we have an email address on file for the property owner. We're utilizing that method as well as through the mail to get it to them. And then officers are going back right away to check whether it's been cut and then issuing those uh, the contractor.
Okay, just a quick follow-up. Um. I know in the past we had talked about properties that, if they were, got a long grass complaint this year. That next year, first thing in the spring, you guys are being proactive and driving around and checking those addresses. Is that still the case?
That, through the chair, that's correct. So if they've got that second notice and the six hundred dollar uh, penalty, then they're on the list for next year automatically. So hopefully it'll reduce the amount of complaints.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions? I just have one quick one. On the um, short-term rental concerns, it, it seems to me that the number is coming down since, so that's good news. And I'm just wondering, um, is that centralized right now in one area where it, where it would be good to just help residents know how to access it? But like, is there any education needed? Is it, is it area specific or is it just sort of spread around?
Uh, through, through the year, at this point it's spread around. It's not one centralized location anymore. Um, uh, they, they seem to be spread out. Um, and uh, so we will continue to work with our manager communications to get the word out. But I think it's fine at this point.
Thank you. And then my second question is just with the general bylaw concern sixty-three. It's not a really, really high number, but it's high-ish. And I'm wondering, is there anything in that category that needs a specific new category? Instead of general bylaw concern that would just help to know if we have an emerging issue that we need to know about?
Thank you through to you. Uh, it's actually those phone calls from people that aren't by law matters. Where the officers or admin staff take time to respond to those inquiries, but it, it's not us. So we do document those because it does take time.
Thank you so much. Uh, so uh, all in favor? So that's carried and back up here. So the last one is five point five automated speed enforcement update. And the recommendation is that committee of the whole, committee of the whole receive report CDO nine twenty five automated speed enforcement is information. I will go to you first, but before I do, I just want to say thank you for this inclusive update because I know how much work this has been. Yes, I can't do that today. Uh, Councilor Fisher and Councilor Goff.
Thank you. Yeah, it has, it has been a lot more work and a lot of things I didn't anticipate that I was going to have to do. Um, so we are close to the finish line to getting this operational. There is uh, a report under transportation. About community safety zones and that I think is the last piece for us to, to move this forward. Um, but we do have everything in place, uh, ready to proceed. Um, signs are in, equipment is ready to be posted. Um, agreements with Hydro One to utilize their telephone poles for the speed cameras. So everything is there. Um, it's just a matter of getting that signatory now from the ministries and this last piece should get us there. So hopefully within uh, within February, we have the signs up saying coming soon.
Councilor Fisher.
Thank you. Um, it was just a question uh, that I received from a resident when they had looked at this. Can you just explain, um, in the report you talked about the work that's um, and the requirements that you've already achieved? And you talked about phase one implementation um, on County Road one sixty-nine, Mule Point, Creighton and Simcoe Road. Can you just explain what phase one, what that looks like?
Sure. So staff using uh, the heat maps and, and speed data that we have identified those as the, the bigger issue locations in the township. So we wanted to focus the cameras there first. And then we have, we have a lot of community safety zones. Um, so we will be picking, picking some other ones to rotate. Um, having said that, with three cameras, we will have the ability to leave them. In specific zones where we're seeing higher speeding uh, activity and, and tickets generated. So that's just kind of where we wanted to start and then we'll rotate from there.
Uh, Deputy Mayor.
So do the signs stay in place, John? Because I know we have to actually advertise that for a certain amount of time prior to putting the camera there. So we have to do that every single time? Or if we leave the signs there, we can put it there whenever we want?
So yes, if we leave the signs there, then we can leave them in place. But yes, we do have to advertise. So we do have a large inventory of those signs. So we can hit all the places that they're going to be going. Uh, so then it's easily moved. And if we want to leave them where they are, then we can leave them at that point as well.
Thank you.
And Mayor.
In a report later in the agenda, but it mentions a lot of signings that were deficient on. Are they going to have to be in place for these cameras, at least in the general area of where the cameras are? It's got to be properly signed, correct?
Uh, through the chair, that's correct, Your Worship. So it's just what our community safety zones and this stealing thunder from that report. Were, were extremely long previously. So every three hundred meters, we had to have a community safety zone sign. And you can see from the map attached to that report, there's a lot of green dots uh, Atherton specifically. So we sign, sign everywhere, wear a sign at that point. Um, so having them reduced to smaller zones. Will allow us to have a little bit less of that sign pollution going on. But then we'll be compliant and then the tickets will be valid.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, to Councilor to you.
Thank you. Through the chair to John. Um, can you explain, I guess, in that part that Councilor Fisher brought up? Phase one implementation of camera systems on County Road one sixty-nine, Mule Point Road, Creighton Street or Simcoe Road. So is all there to denote that this would be happening one at a time? Like, it was my understanding that we were going to be getting multiple cameras. So do we have to choose or can they just all go out during phase one?
Thank you through the chair to Councilor to you. So we'll have three, three cameras, so three at the same time. And then they can rotate from there. So it's, was just a, a listing of, of the areas in that report.
Uh, I just noticed that we got the agreement with Hydro One for placement of the cameras on the hydro pools, which is great news in terms of vandalism and avoiding that. Thanks.
Any other questions? I have one, which probably was best for the presentation when it first came. And it may have been answered and you may not know, but I'm going to ask anyway. Um. What, did we get information that said, that tells us if you have the cameras on this street, does it impact on the surrounding streets? Like, in other words, will you, did, did they tell us whether if it's on Simcoe Road, you don't see as much speeding on, say, Lake Shore or Laguna? Like, did we, did we get that information? Because I can't recall.
Uh, I honestly don't remember, Councilor Bell. I can certainly go back and look to see if there's data about whether it pushes speed to other areas. I'm hopeful it doesn't because they're concerned that we have cameras there as well. But I can certainly look that up and provide that if, if we have it.
Thank you. Okay, so with no other question, oh, sorry, go ahead, Councilor to you.
Thank you. Through the chair back to John. Uh, just further to what was just asked, the um. Oh, oh, yeah, the, the multi sort of uh, ability of these cameras of, of focusing on other streets. Not necessarily other streets, but I remember when they made their deputation to council that they were um. Also useful for as stop sign cameras. I know that we did discuss with our previous, previous uh, CAO, Trig Walter. That um, this would just be for speed only, but would they not have that capability to also monitor whether someone stops at a stop sign?
So through the charity, so those are different cameras from my understanding and they're mounted in different areas. They're obviously mounted at the stop sign zones. So it would be a whole different program that would require implementation. But we have the existing infrastructure in place, then it would be, we could add those uh, at a future date.
Okay, thank you. I didn't realize they were different ones.
Okay, so I think everybody's good. So all in favor? So that is carried and I will pass it back to the mayor and hope that in the future, other people have the ability to place things on the floor. Before they start talking.
Alrighty, so with that, I will go to Transportation Services. Couple of short motions there for you, Councilor Goff.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, there's a few items on the agenda or. Just one big, long uh, first item on the agenda is item six point one rural road safety initiative. Recommendation that report ID oh four dash twenty-five be received in that we support rural road safety program developed by Ontario Good Roads Association. And whereas official statistics from the government of Ontario confirm that rural roads. Are inherently more dangerous than other roads. And whereas despite only having seventeen percent of the population. Fifty-five percent of the road fatalities occur on rural roads. And whereas rural northern and remote municipalities are fiscally strained by maintaining extensive road networks. On a smaller tax base and whereas preventing crashes reduces the burden on Ontario already strained rural. Strained healthcare systems. Whereas roadway collisions and associated lawsuits are significant factors. In runaway municipal insurance premiums, renting crashes can have significant impact on improving municipal risk profiles. Therefore, be it resolved that the township or mayor requests that the government of Ontario take action. To implement the rural road safety program that Good Roads has committed to lead. It will allow Ontario's rural municipalities to make critical investments needed to reduce the high number of people being killed or seriously injured. On Ontario's rural roads and further that a copy of this resolution be forwarded to Premier Doug Ford, Honorable. Promet, Sekira, Minister of Transportation, Honorable King, Soma Minister of Infrastructure, Honorable Rob Black. Minister of Agriculture. Honorable Lisa Thompson, Minister of Rural Affairs, Honorable Trevor Jones, Associate Minister of Emergency Preparedness and Response. And Honorable Sylvia Jones, Minister of Health and Good, and Good Roads. And further that this resolution be circulated to all municipalities in Ontario requesting their support. Have somebody put that on the floor. Councilor Fisher, Councilor to you. Questions? Councilor Fisher.
Uh, thank you. I just noticed a spelling error that I didn't um, notice when we had passed the agenda, adopted the agenda. Um, I just want to make sure that we, uh, Minister Serma's name is spelt correctly.
I, I'm just concerned about sending this at this time because as we're going into an election, I don't think it has very much of an impact. Because these roles have, we don't know what the next cabinet's going to look like. I think it should be deferred until after the election.
That was actually uh, my concern because as of February twenty seventh, some of these. Honorable's may not be honorable anymore. So do you want to amend the?
That's my amendment, yeah, is to defer this until after the provincial election is completed and the cabinets have been named.
Okay, so the mover and secondary are okay with that? Be deferred? All in favor? That is carried. Next item on the agenda is item six point two, infrastructure project carryover for, into twenty twenty five. Recommendation that report ID oh three dash twenty-five be received in that we approved carryover of two. Infrastructure projects from twenty twenty four to twenty twenty five. Drain one maintenance and the engineering design guideline update. Can I have somebody put that on the floor, please? Deputy Mayor, Councilor Fisher. Questions, comments? Seeing none, all in favor? That is carried. Next item on the agenda is item six point three, community safety zones automated speed enforcement. Recommendation that report ID oh five dash twenty-five be received and that the signage and community safety zones be altered as listed in this report. And that the community safety bylaw be updated to reflect suggest changes in this report. Somebody put that on the floor for me?
Sure.
Mr. Councillor Bell, councillor Fisher, discussion. Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, there is a lot of signage, even with the updated one, we're gonna require new signage. Do we have any idea what the cost? I mean, uh, I think the speed cameras will make up for, for, for the cost of, you've downsized it quite a bit. But when I looked at all those green dots originally, I mean, holy crap. So do we have any idea what the cost will be just for the updates that's required? For the speed signs only? The speed cameras, I guess.
Well, I think with the uh, green dots, they're eliminating a lot of yeah, the areas in condensing, right? Where they only have to put the sign at the start of it and assign at the end of the side.
I, I believe through the chair, the, the report does state that sixty-one signs would be required, I believe, and that three hundred dollars. Um, each additional sign that costs approximately three hundred dollars to purchase and install.
Anything? Deputy Mayor.
I'm just curious, in the north, there doesn't seem to be any green dots or part of the map showing there. I mean, I know that there's not a lot of parks up the way. There is the one on Poplar. Um, as well as the Ramona Hall, there's a lot of functions with kids and families, the parks being used more there as far as the ball diamond. I'm just curious if that's some, how, how do we have that addressed or looked at, John?
Uh, so it would require uh, the community safety zones bylaw in its entirety to come back again and look at what's been implemented. I'd off the top of my head, I don't know which ones are up there. Um, but it would just be a, a matter if council desired to have additional community safety zones in those areas, then we could add them to the list.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I would, I just was gonna say Ramona seems to me a good one because when the fall fair and that is on, everybody's going back and forth across the road. So um, but I, we didn't, we didn't talk about community safety zones. It, it specifically, they've come up um, sporadically as one offs and we haven't actually looked at. So I wonder if we can ask for just the full, because this doesn't have the full overall list in it, I don't think, does it? So if we could just have the whole list and then we can kind of look at that and maybe everybody collectively come up with thoughts.
Through the cherry, I can do that. Um, the uh, the acting director will be here shortly and I can certainly work with him to to uh, revise that list and bring it back to, to council.
Thanks, John.
Councillor to you.
Thank you. Uh, through the chair to John. I'm just trying to figure out the Atherley situation here. And I, I know that we had uh, voted to put one in on Orkney Beach Road there and that's that the map cuts off and it's not mentioned in there. Is that still planned to, because they, they had specifically requested to be part of the um, um, automated speed enforcement. Can you speak to that?
Through the chair, yes, it's included in there. It says Atherley was the, a significant problem. That's why it's identified in this report. The other locations were, there's no changes requested because the zones were small enough that signage, existing signage was adequate. It's just here, we're, because they were so long and big that we're, we're saying they should be shortened to reduce the amount of signs required um, in those zones.
Just to clarify, so, so it's the same as it was, but it's just not written that way.
That's correct. It's just they've shortened the def, the, the area defined into sections so that we could, don't have to put as many signs up.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions? All in favor? That is passed. Back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, I have just the unfinished and new business uh, before closed. Uh, do we have an update? We were going to get the Lake Shore uh, sewage expansion project, I think was supposed to come next month, the final design, and then council decided to go ahead with that. Do we know if that report is still coming? Uh, put the C A O on the spot here.
Right, through you, Mr. Mayor. Yep, absolutely on the spot. I do not know. Uh, so I will uh, certainly look into that for you and uh, send a note out to council so that uh, you are aware of that timeframe.
I think the final design that was sent out to tender and we're waiting for those tenders to come back because then council has, hasn't made a decision on whether we're going ahead with it or not. We're just waiting for that to come back, correct?
I, I don't believe it's been sent, sent out for tender as of yet.
Has it been sent to tender? Do we know? Uh, no, I'm not sure.
Um, I'm not sure, but from what I recall, I think we were waiting on Tatum to finalize something to be able to go in tenders, but
I think the report was gonna come to council prior to tender though, I believe.
Yeah, I'm not sure about that.
Well, it is going to. That's what I'm hearing. Okay, Ashley, did you?
Yeah, the, the verbiage that I, I, that I received when I was doing the priorities. So Tatum engineers finalizing the documents to release for tender to explore the requirements and cost for the project. So they need to for, they need to finalize that. And then I believe they were going to tender to get what the cost would be. So then a decision could then be made.
So they were gonna, that's what I thought. All right. So it's tendered first and then we come back and see the tenders and decide whether to go ahead or not, I believe. Is when the decision's made. Okay, everybody's clear on that? Councillor Bell?
I, but we did carry it in January of twenty twenty-three. Like we approved the servicing and that's
Yes.
I, because there's confusion now in the public. So I just want to clarify that in, on January sixteenth of twenty twenty-three, council approved the servicing project and that's the reason it's at tender. It's not at tender just because it's at tender. So there just was some confusion out there. And uh, so if we decided when it comes back that we're not going to proceed, we would actually be repealing or rescinding our own decision, which I, I know we can do, but it's just, we did carry that motion and I just, I want to make sure that that message is out there because people are now, they're a bit confused by it.
Well, we haven't approved the tenders. That's the point. No project is going until the tenders approved, right?
Right, but we approved the, we approved.
We approved doing the studies and proceeding to tender, but we have not approved the tenders. So it's, it's, it's kind of a, a yes and no. We have approved the project to go to tender. So we can make a final decision. Well, yeah, we'll make the final decision when we see the tenders because that's when you get the exact cost because we couldn't tell the individuals how much it was actually gonna cost each home. It's all a guesstimate until such time as the tenders come back. Okay, uh, so any other unfinished or new?
Yep.
Yeah, deputy mayor.
Um, I think in the light of the United States election, I'd just like to make sure that I'm gonna bring this up a county as well. I think us as a municipality need to join with our provincial and federal governments and I think we should be making sure we try to purchase, you know, something within Canada and I think we should be supporting local and be very careful, even if it's part of our technical during the package um, tendering out, I think we should definitely be trying to keep within our area for province and then federally, I think we should be, be supporting that same motion or that movement.
Maybe have a discussion at the next committee of the whole on that then, and whether we come up with a policy to shop local. Wouldn't we do? I know county really does try and shop local when they can, but I mean, there's a lot of projects aren't made in Simcoe County.
Hey.
So if we can put that on the next committee of the whole. Any others? Councillor Bell?
Thank you. I have just a couple of quick things. Um, on December ninth, we approved that staff would um, return with an alternative location for the Romero Library and then a couple of days later, it just was determined that the library would move into the administrative center. Um, and then I know at the last meeting, we carried uh, the, the lease agreement. And I guess I just am looking for clarity on um, is, what is our intent? Are we going to be looking still for an alternative location? Um, because that is the motion we carried and um, that also created some confusion because we had been, we hadn't received the reports from the summertime and so council was unaware. Um, well, it seemed that there was information there to tell us in June and July that, that that the Brecken branch would need to close. Um, we weren't aware of that until we received the December nine report and there was just one line in there indicating to us that the Brecken branch needed to close. So the motion we carried said, and that staff look for an alternative location for the Romero Library and report back to council. And we actually have never had a report back to council. And I just don't know where we're sitting right now. So I don't know if, are we still expecting a report or are we just kind of status quo and the library is just gonna operate from the administrative center or I, I just don't know where we're going.
Some of that was being handled and I, and I could take some was the former C A O because I know right before Christmas is when we all found out that they had to be out of the building they were in. And we'd asked the C A O because we were going on Christmas break to find alternate locations for the library. So we delegated that to the C A O who approached me and asked to use my office and I said, by all means, go ahead. So that's why they're where they are. Because we delegate that to the C A O to find them a location until such a temporary location, until a permanent one can be found. So right now, it's the fate of the buildings beside us. We, we've applied for some grants and we're waiting on to hear if we got those grants first. And uh, if they're all denied, then yeah, then we're gonna have to put our heads around whether there even is a future of a library in the Brecken area. That's gonna have to come, but I think right now we're waiting on the grants, are we not, Ashley, that we've applied for? Or there, there's like a ten or twelve million dollar grant we've applied for, have we not?
Yeah, so we applied for the green and inclusive grant and we have not heard back yet.
Right, right.
Once we hear back, I will uh, let the, the board and the members of council know right away. Um, and I don't know if Clerk Connor had any further comments.
That's what I was just gonna say. If you had anything further, that's where we're at now. It's, it's a very temporary solution until such time as, as we find a future.
That's correct, your worship. The intent is that once we have more details going forward, there will be a report coming. So that's still in the works. Uh, and as far as the lease signing the lease agreement, uh, the libraries always had a lease agreement with the township for the space they've used. There was not one drafted for the uh, ballpark building because it was done so fast. And because of the situation, this is just an administrative piece that we needed to do that can be amended, altered when we know where we're, when we know more of where we're going.
Right. I don't even think we had one for the ballpark before. There, there was one for the medical building that we got put out of there and they were put in the ballpark. Yeah, there was no lease for that one either.
You're correct, your worship, and that's why we're getting back on track with the leases.
Yep, that was a temporary one as well. So it'll be waiting on, I think the grants will be the first thing we'll wait on and then we'll have to get a report back to what the future is, so.
Thank you. I appreciate it. I just uh, it, it's just an integrity thing because it, it sounded like council made a decision that we didn't actually make unless we, we didn't even, we didn't have a meeting on it. So I just wanted to be
No, we, we delegated to the C A O to find them a location.
And I understand that. It's just people were asking me, why would we, you know, why didn't we do something about Brecken if we, and, and we couldn't because we didn't know. So I just want to be clear on that. So um, the next thing is unfortunately for the C A O, um, so my understanding is when concession road seven closed, it was because an affluent hauler had rolled over. Um, I don't understand the timeline, which I communicated to you in email. Um, it seems that we were hauling affluent when there was a significant uh, storm happening. Um, and I, on December twenty-third, an affluent truck slid off the road at Simcoe Laguna and it, we were again going into holidays. So the only thing I could do was contact then C A O and request of him, um, or not even request because I can't direct, but I did say to him that out of fear and concern, I was wondering why we would continue affluent hauling in significant weather. Um, to which I received a response that Aqua would be contacted and infrastructure would be involved in the conversation. So you, you couldn't, didn't know that. Um, but it, on the seventh, there was already by nine o'clock in the morning, a massive pileup on Highway eleven. By ten o'clock, we closed Romero Center. At three thirty in the afternoon, we declared the significant weather event. Um, at three o'clock is when concession road seven was closed and residents in the area reported to me that the accident actually occurred at eleven o'clock in the morning. What I don't know right now is, was there an environmental spill? I'm assuming that if it was affluent, there may have been. I don't know. Um, but I guess bottom line, um, I, I don't know why we're still hauling to start with because I don't understand why the ponds aren't frozen. They should be. So I don't know whether we're agitating the ponds to keep them from freezing so that we can haul, so that we can reach this hundred and twenty cubic. And if we are, I'm not sure why. I don't know what's happening. Um, and I, I don't think that it, it's a good decision to have um, affluent trucks out on the roadways when we're in this kind of significant weather, which looks to be um, on the schedule for continuing over the next month or so. And I, I think that we put residents in danger and I, and I know that the people particularly in the residential community of Logan City who they're, they can't, they already are afraid to walk on their street and they have been for months. And while I understand we can't change that, we could mitigate it by not having hauling occurring in these kinds of storms. So I, I don't really know what happened Friday. But I think that it's, it's an issue that we need to, to deal with.
So I'll go to the fire chief. Was uh, you were on scene and the C A O, uh, go ahead. I'll start with C A O. Go ahead, Gal.
Thank you, worship. Through you. Uh, in fact, the accident did occur uh, earlier in the day. Uh, it was, I went by myself personally at about um, quarter to eight or eight o'clock in the morning on Friday morning. At which point the O P P were already on scene. The vehicle was actually off to the side, felt it was in the ditch. I actually contacted the fire chief, let the fire chief know that the vehicle was there. Uh, so accidents do occur, your worship, uh, and I would rely on the subject matter experts to determine whether in fact it is safe or it is unsafe to travel. So I would rely on the contractor to determine whether his truck should be pulled off the road or not. Uh, I don't think that that would be up to me by any means or anyone else other than the contractor to, to, to make that determination. The road was shut down uh, later on in the afternoon because they had to bring in special equipment to remove the vehicle. So the road was not shut down during the day until that equipment actually was on site to uh, pull the tanker out of the, the ditch. Uh, so Fire Chief Song is um, well aware of the situation as well and he actually went to the scene. Uh, so I will ask him to share any observations he had.
Good, Tony.
Thank you. Uh, through to you, your worship. Um, I did attend the scene. My first knowledge of the incident uh, was actually the call from the um, C A O uh, informing me of it. Um, I did go by the scene and uh, speak with the officer on scene. I also sent a district chief in there because they could get there before I did to, to talk to ensure there was no spill or significant spill. Um, so they attended the scene. The accident was well off the roadway. Uh, though I don't think there's any discrepancy about the condition of the roads that day because of the significant, significant weather. Uh, all I can comment on is what we saw. Um, there was no significant spill there. And as, well, anyone that knows the hazmat world, the spiller pays or the spiller is responsible for that cleanup. So Wesak was on scene and they sent multiple units and they were aware that they were required to clean up and mitigate any diesel or affluent spillage. When I observed it, I did not see any liquids on the ground. So everything was contained within the vehicle because of the volume of snow, it seemed to have more of a slow roll. So it didn't damage the integrity of the tank causing affluent to spill out. But nonetheless, when they did remove that vehicle, if there was any spill, they were responsible.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I guess what I'm looking for from council is maybe just uh, some support that we're, we're gonna suspend hauling when we're in the middle of significant weather for the safety of our residents in those communities. I, I I hear what the C A O is saying, but I also know that that's the fourth accident that those trucks have had in, in significant weather. And I think that four times pretty lucky that we didn't, it didn't, actually there was one that involved another vehicle. Um, I don't know that those people were injured, but I know it involves another vehicle, but we're still at four accidents in significant weather and I just, I'm not sure uh, if there's something else happening that I'm unaware of that is causing us to adamantly say that we're gonna haul till we hit that one twenty. Um, we, we suspended it last year when we got, we, we suspended it in January. So we're well into February. It's been minus fourteen and more overnight. I don't even understand how the ponds aren't frozen. So I'm not sure why we're, why we're continuing to haul. And um, I, I, I just don't think it's safe to have hauling trucks going up and down Logan Parkway especially in, in weather like we were having on Friday and I would not like to see us hauling. So that, that's what I'm asking for is council support to say that when we're in significant weather, we, we suspend hauling for that, that amount of time.
Well, uh, again, that would be something we could have a discussion in a future committee of the whole if we want to look into a policy to ban the hauling. I know we did get the report uh, but a month ago, uh, and they were gonna haul as long as they could haul that because the idea is we didn't have to pay as much money, having one truck going all the time as opposed to bringing in a fleet of trucks. So that's why we are hauling and we will continue to haul uh, as per the report, but uh, I, I believe we can, we'll be getting another report from Aqua here. Probably I'm looking at the clerk next month or something. I would expect to an update uh, on where they're at on the hauling. As you know, we've been ordered to haul. That's not an option. So I know I'm not gonna ban or personally, I wouldn't be looking to ban any trucks on the road. I wouldn't ban a fuel truck or any other truck that uh, had to haul during a significant weather event, but we can certainly get a report at a future committee of the whole on how much more we have to haul. So, okay. Any other requests?
Just a quick one. Um, and this arose, and this is questions from residents. So I'm, I have to proceed. Um, we had made the land purchase for the um, what will be the solution at Bayshore in twenty twenty-three, um, or twenty twenty-two, actually. Um, and then we, and then, and that was closed session, obviously. Um, and And then we, and then, and that was closed session, obviously. Um, and then we we came out and we did the bills and bylaws. Uh, aspect of it in in March of twenty twenty-three and to date. We have never um talked about the land purchase in open session. So we we have had conversations around the table about what's the valuation of the portion that's intended. Um, for the Bay Shore solution, for example, um and. So no harm done, I realize that, but it hasn't come into open session. But then what did happen is when we had the master rep presentation the other night. Um, the the plan includes a conversation about the fact that we own all this land. That is natural area of protection and may or may not become a park and there's an island and what might it be? And there have been questions over more than the last year. Um, where residents were asking what we purchased and what's our intent? And we haven't released that intent, but then all of a sudden it came out in that report. So. I don't know where to go right now, but I'm, I mean, can we have a report or do we need a report at this point? Because residents don't know what our intent is. But yet the master rep plan talked about an intent that council hasn't even talked about. So I I'm a little bit confused about where we are.
Well, we own the land, so it can be used for anything that the master rec wants to use it for. As far as the the land for the septic system, we haven't got the approvals to go ahead yet. We're still doing all the studies. So once we get the approvals to go ahead and we tender the project, then that's when we'll talk about the cost of the land. It'll all come in the same report. So. We've secured actually more land than we need for the project. So now it's just a matter of waiting for the approvals and then it'll all come back to council in a report.
I guess I'm just saying that everything's held enclosed right now. So if we have it enclosed, how could the master rep folks talk about it?
It's like so. The land, the land is public. Uh, we.
We have never taken anything out of closed session other than we, on March twenty-seven of twenty twenty-three. We carried the bylaw to provide for the acquisition of lot twenty twenty-two concession seven Mara, blah, blah, blah. We just, that's all we've ever done. So. Now we had a rec plan talking about all these things and I've had calls from residents saying what how much, what's your intent for the land? And I I don't want to talk about it because we only have it held in closed session.
Incorrect. Uh, we've even publicly discussed the options that we're doing on the sewer and water plant, and we're actually going to final design and trying to get licensed. It's very public knowledge. That there's twenty or forty acres of that land purchased is going to be used for the spray fields. We've already initiated the studies all in public. We had the meeting. We decided to go with a septic system on that land. Uh, we haven't assessed the value that will go to the uh sewer and water users yet because we don't have the final costs and we don't have the approvals yet. Uh, all public. We've even talked about having a subdivision on the other part of the land when we subdivided. So all the discussion around that land has been public. So. That'll answer the question. I'll look for any more questions or clarification from the C A O.
Through you, your worship, if I may, certainly if there is any surplus land as a result of that project, it will come forward as a report to council to determine the future use of that land.
Yep. Okay, any other questions?
Thank you. That's all I was asking for because we actually haven't even talked about the subdivision. Like we have not discussed anything outside of closed session. That's my concern. So if we could have a report that talks about it, that that I think would be very helpful for people. Because we actually, we never have talked about the subdivision.
Yes, we have. Well, we have, they are planning, looking into the Val Harbor and what we could fit on that land. That was not an in camera discussion on the possible. Uh severance of that property. But again, we've made no final decisions. It's all been discussions at the committee of the whole at this point. Until we finish the final studies and see how much that we need for the land. So. It's all been discussed in public, other than the actual purchase price, which I think has even been made public now too, I believe.
I I thought we discussed it at uh budget and I thought I believe that we put it in in budget discussion about the cost.
I've I've seen stuff online that's the exact amount, so somebody's got it out there. I think when we pass by law, Madam Clerk, uh when we pass a bylaw to purchase a land, it would have had the purchase price.
That's correct, your worship.
But now we don't know how much is assessed to the water users yet because we haven't gone ahead with the project.
I I understand that. I've I've read every single minutes related to this item, every single one back to that day. We have never brought a report forward that said we purchased this land with. These intents or not or anything. We have no report. I know you think we did because it's over two years ago. But we have never, and I've been asked questions numerous times and I keep on saying to people, I can't talk to you about what the intent for the land is because we don't have an open session discussion. So. All I'm asking for is a staff report, even if all it, anything right now that says. You know, yeah, there's parkland. Yes, there could be a subdivision like we just, now it's in the public because we're talking about it, but we have never ever taken it out of the um. Closed session domain. And so there were people sitting there on Wednesday night who were aware that this is in closed session and they're some of the people that phoned me and said. Why are they talking about that if you haven't? And we did talk about evaluation and in fact it was the wrong amount. So I do think it's important that we have a staff report that comes forward that just talks about what that purchase is, just to answer residents' questions. That's all.
And again, uh through to the clerk and then I'm moving on. Uh, it will be coming when we get the final designs for this sewage field and we realize how much land we have to set aside, but until we get the final approvals. There may not be a septic field on that. We we don't know where we're gonna end up. I mean, we're hoping we don't have to pipe to Lagoon City, but until the province approves. Anything on that land, we don't have a final cost. So the report will be coming on the final cost and how much land will be set aside uh for. The sewage system when we get the approvals. So is there any other unfinished or new business? Counselor to you.
No, go ahead.
Oh, oh, yeah, counselor to you.
Thank you. Um, in in recent conversation I was having with uh. Historian researcher in Rama First Nation Ben Kuzano, we were talking about um. Some outdated terms that might be uh used within some of the townships signage, namely Old Indian Trail. Um, I understand, I, you know, we we talked about the history of, you know, maybe that was in fact a. A passage route or something like that, but he, you know, did confirm for me that that term was outdated and in fact offensive. And I thought it might be appropriate if we decided as a council or committee. Um, to maybe ask our friends in Rama their opinion on it to see what they, what their feelings were on it.
I don't have Jen here anymore, but there is a schedule coming and that was one of the roads to be renamed. We're doing in the phases. So we've done some now, but I'm not sure when the other ones are coming back. Do you remember, Counselor Goff?
Yeah, if I remember correctly, I think. It was talked about and. In discussions with. Grandma First Nations and they didn't have an issue with that road being called that. If I remember correctly, I could be mistaken, but I believe that's what.
We'll get an update on that. I'm looking to Walleye through the pine to buy, but we can get an update on that at a future meeting.
Uh, yes, that did come up a few years ago and there wasn't a concern raised at the time, but we still did have it on the shortlist list for potential road name change.
So it's still on the list.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, because they also have a new council since that time.
Okay, not seen anymore. So I will, we'll take a recess and then we've got in clamor here, uh. One item to come in closed session. So that's into the public uh session. So let's come back at four thirty. Is that enough?
You were just have a motion for the shop local to appear on the next committee of the whole agenda. I need a mover in a second or for a motion for the shop local shop.
Oh, yeah. All right. Sorry. Uh, moved by Counselor Goff, second by Deputy Mayor.
Thank you.
We'll put that on the next made the whole, all favor. Yeah, the next made the whole. And yeah, so it's it's four thirty-seven. What do you want to break to twenty-five to five? Everybody fine with that? Quick break and then we'll go in camera. All right. And yeah, so it's, it's four thirty-seven. What do you want to break to twenty-five to five? Everybody fine with that? Quick break and then we'll go in camera. All right.